Great.
Okay. So, good morning. This is Knox County Commissioners, May fifteenth session on two thousand twenty-five. We do have Scott Boone from our Department of Job and Family Services and our guest from the Area Agency on Aging that they're going to be sharing with us and we'll have to say your names. That will be part of our record here. So Scott, I'll turn it over to you first to do our intro.
Thank you, Bill. As you know, I'm Scott Boone, the Director of Knox County Job and Family Services. We've, we were talking just a few minutes ago about our partnership with Area Agency on Aging. It goes back to twenty sixteen. I didn't realize, sorry, twenty nineteen. I didn't realize it had been that long. And it's been a wonderful partnership in the beginning. The reasons to reach out to them and, and, you know, count them as a resource for our older population in our community. We didn't feel like we were casting a wide enough net to reach out to those folks and them with the abuse and neglect and exploitation that they were facing. And the numbers have showed that we've served a whole lot of families and individuals over the past six years. Trey Turner and Rick Meeker are our primary go-tos when it comes to all things adult protective. So I'll let them introduce themselves and talk a little bit about the programming.
Thank you very much. And again, my name is Rick Meeker and I'm the Supervisor for the Adult Protective Services Program. And been supervising adult protective services with the Area Agency on Aging since two thousand seventeen. Prior to that, I worked in some different roles there until came onboard there in two thousand and ten. So with Adult Protective Services, just to give a little bit of an overview, we're commissioned to go ahead by the Ohio Administrative Code to investigate allegations of abuse, neglect, exploitation for folks sixty and over that are living in the community. Now, if somebody would not meet those guidelines, so we have some folks who we got a call here recently with any suggestions on somebody under sixty. We, it doesn't mean that we're not going to help. We're going to hang up the phone and say, don't call us unless it's somebody over sixty. We might not be able to do as much legally because with the Ohio Administrative Code, it allows us to do things for folks who are sixty and over living in the community. If it meets those requirements where somebody is at risk of abuse, neglect or exploitation, but it might mean that we give resources, we try to help people get linked so that they can go ahead and address some of those concerns too. Since we do have some folks that in Ohio, that might be in their fifties, that might be struggling in some other ways. So we are aware, because of the work Area Agency on Aging does, we're aware of just some other resources that are available. And again, with abuse, neglect, exploitation, some of the cases that we see, especially cases of neglect, neglect was the highest reported. Just to give you an idea, we received three hundred and forty-one total referrals last year. And of that, neglect was the highest category.
That's true.
That was just in the last ten. And that's been pretty on par with what we see in that ballpark over the past several years. And with it, we anticipate that number will continue to increase just because folks are living on a fixed income. Under neglect, neglect purely states that somebody's not able to get their needs met. That could be medical needs, that could be food, clothing, shelter. We're seeing a lot of now unfortunately with housing. Could be mental health needs, whatever it is, but it doesn't mean that there's an intentionality. In some cases, there might be a caregiver trying their best, but they just don't have the tools to be able to assist. And the resources, they, they're not sure where to go to. They might be overwhelmed. So because of that, for one reason or another, somebody's not getting those needs met. So that falls into a category of neglect. Exploitation was definitely on the rise. I've been in some state meetings and from what I've heard across the state of Ohio, that number was actually for exploitation was beginning to surpass neglect. Neglect was the huge trend. So we are still doing that. We're still trying to do some outreach in cases of exploitation. There's a lot more people out there who are trying to scam older adults. So we're trying to provide education. One of our goals is to let folks know, you know, pause. When somebody calls you, these folks are very good at operating on an emotional level. Maybe it's a fear factor. It's the IRS. Who's not scared of the IRS? It's pretty scary, you know, when we think about that. When we hear that, I mean, everybody, everybody knows the deadline to file taxes and there's a reason for that. So as folks get scared, get overwhelmed, they hear that there's something wrong. They get a phone call. They're immediately handing over all of this information. And then at the end of that, it's, it can be very tough to recover. For some of those people too, it can lead into cases of neglect as well, because some of those individuals afterwards, it's been, it can be very traumatic, what happens to individuals after they've been exploited. And for some individuals, it's also letting them know, if you've been exploited, you're not alone, unfortunately. It's, we have folks who have had higher degrees of education. And I'll hear, well, I have this, this, this degree and I can't believe I fell for that. The thing is, exploiters do a really good job of working on the emotional center of the brain, not the logical center. When that emotional center in the brain comes in, by, it becomes an overwhelming command, that fear factor to listen to that and react. I want to immediately alleviate that fear, basic human nature. So it does mean that the logical point, which might be saying, hey, let's put on the brakes, it's shut off. So unfortunately, we're seeing that. And in some of those cases, we are running into neglect because we've heard, I, we need rental assistance. Someone will lose my housing because I fell for this scam. We've recognized that there are steps, but when that happens, unfortunately, in those cases, a lot of times the money's lost. We're not able to do things to recover. Some of the banks have worked with that and they've done a great job of alerting and even go taking steps to try to recover some of the money. And especially in cases where things have been disputed. But again, in some cases, especially as we're seeing more with Bitcoin and cryptocurrency, it becomes a little bit more of an issue. What I wanted to do now, and I wasn't sure if you had any specific questions for us at all.
Well, one of the questions that popped up in my mind, so how did they get ahold of you? Do they somehow stumble upon Job and Family Services and say, hey, I'm sixty and then I, I, I need assistance? So, you know, what's the contact to get to, to your services?
Absolutely. And one of the beautiful things about the partnership here is there's a few different ways that folks can do that. One is there's a state website that somebody can go to and the state website will automatically send us an online referral. It is through Job and Family Services. The second way would be to contact social services here. There are some screeners that also screen for children's services. They do a really great job of screening. When we get reports very thorough, they know exactly what we're looking for. They take the reports here. And then just like they would if they were making a report to Children's Services and then the report gets forwarded to us.
Do you find, I'm sorry.
That's sorry Barry, that's three nine two kids.
Yeah. Do you, do you find that the age bracket that you're talking about has a hard time with the computer and email and access that way to get ahold of you?
Yes.
So there's an alternative, the phone number you just gave to get ahold of them. Cause I know my in-laws, there's no way if you said, go online and, you know, get ahold of us, they'd be like, yeah.
Absolutely. And that's where we get, the majority of online referrals we'll get from some of the financial institutions. We've been seeing that a lot more where they're the ones that are doing that. But for somebody, whether it be caregivers or whether it be the older adults themselves that we work with, a lot of them, they do like that phone number by all means.
Sure.
We like to have it as well. There's a lot of benefit to that because when we get that phone call or even if we're out in the community, we do try to do some outreach events as well. We're able to talk people through because there might be some things on my mind if I get that. The online referral, that's it. I don't, I can't ask a lot of probing questions. I, I'm getting what I see. I would have to kind of try to track down the reporter and get that information back on the phone. And that's where I think the social services staff here in Knox County do a really great job because some of those questions we have, they've anticipated, they've asked that and a little bit more and helped to provide resources for individuals sometimes in those phone calls and then we're getting that. So that's where definitely we love the phone calls folks are making to us.
You threw the number out of three forty-one if I'm not mistaken?
That's correct.
Was that actual cases that were referred, but that, those weren't actually processed? Do you know what I'm trying to say by that?
Some of those cases, out of that, there were over two hundred that were open of those cases. With those cases, some of those were duplicate cases. In other words, we may have opened a case on someone here.
Right.
Then eventually, and let's say we got a, something from one reporter. We encourage people, no matter what, even if you think somebody else reported, please, if you know abuse, neglect, exploitation is occurring with older adults, please let us know. Because sometimes that helps us to fill in the blanks. We love that. Because maybe there's something this reporter told us that this reporter knows. So even though that case wasn't open, a lot of these were because they were already existing open case. So it became additional information for us and it helped us to tell that story. So there was a portion there. The other part too, is if we could triage, sometimes my staff will call back. They'll try to triage, walk them through, try to get them pointed in the right direction if we feel we can do that.
Yeah. Well, thank you. Good. And I'm sure we'll have more questions.
Just to give you some more ideas. And again, if you have any other questions, please feel free to stop me. But just to give you a breakdown in some of the services utilized, so of those folks where we believe we need to get, really kind of help brainstorm, get them connected because we believe that they'll still be at risk of abuse, neglect or exploitation. There were sixteen referrals in which we provided information from the Attorney General's Office. Information for legal resources. That was another sixty-three referrals. And some of those legal resources were the Better Business Bureau, law enforcement, law enforcement here in this community has been really an asset to us. Some of the cases that we go into, because there might be a criminal element to it, or depending upon who else happens to be living in the home, there's some cases where there might be drug activity. So there becomes a safety concern for my workers. Law enforcement's done a great job tagging along with us and being there to help us. And in some cases, because of the authority that they've had, they've been able to really help us during those investigations to do what we need to. We've also noticed as well that there's been funding utilized for home repair assistance in thirty-five cases. Some of those cases as well, there were appliances that were utilized from other funding sources. And I know Trey will mention a little bit more about some of the things Area Agency on Aging has utilized and what they've done with some funds. But with some of the programs available through Area Agency on Aging, through other funding sources, we were able to provide some assistance for folks with appliances and some home repair. Like I said, unfortunately, some of those were limited. So those were just the cases of folks that we were able to use those funds for. I will say as well, for some of the things that I've mentioned as well, like chore service, with funding now the way that it is, it's really hard when we've identified some of those risks and challenges to meet some of those needs. And you see too, we've got, when it comes to the chore service, that piece of it, again, we were only able to help as well. That thirty-five included that along with some home repair assistance, just based on some of those other funds. In total, we were able to use some of the funds through APS and the APS funds also included the levy funds. Very appreciative of that.
APS means?
All Adult Protective Services, my apologies.
That's all right.
Thank you. Sorry about that. I get used to my own acronyms if I do that. Just let me know. But it's, in those cases too, there were seventeen folks that we were able to assist with, with the Adult Protective Services Funds, which include the levy funds. So we were very appreciative of that. What we tried to do was try to locate and use those funds as funds of last resort. So we tried to reach out to different community resources that were available. Again, we tried to tap in with what Area Agency on Aging had. It was one of the things that's been very helpful. Because with where I'm located, I can walk down the hall and say, hey, would you be able to triage? I've got this person. They're needing immediate assistance, maybe at a hotel. You got any funds we can use? In some cases, those funds are limited and we weren't able to do that. So in seventeen cases, we did have to really kind of think outside the box. And we did use some of those Adult Protective Services Funds because of the situation. Several of those funds included a hotel stay, rental assistance. And then also in regards to home repair to make the home safe. One of the home repair assists was to even have a furnace installed because we had somebody with absolutely no heat last year. So that was very appreciative because if not, we'd been in some homes where because of folks living on a fixed income, you suddenly get hit with, I need a furnace fixed. Limited as far as to what could be available. There's one job that we were involved with where we actually had coordinated with Habitat for Humanity. We did part of it and the individual was going to be reaching out to Habitat for Humanity to have other repair work done. So that was really nice to be able to tap into Terry, that resource. So we had let the client know, you know, what if you want to follow up, you want this other repair work done? Terry's advised he'd be able to do that.
Educate me on the funding process. Is, you mentioned levy, is that where the, the, your general funds, most of them come from? Is through levy or is it a grant from the government? How do you, how do you machine your funds?
Specifically for the Adult Protective Services. I don't know if you want to speak to that a little bit, Scott or?
Well, I'll told, correct me if I'm wrong, guys. For two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six, our, we're budgeted for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in our partnership. Part of that funding is for case, two case manager positions, supervisor, the admin, support staff, mileage and travel training, supplies, IT equipment. And miscellaneous supportive services. So we, in the past, have utilized levy dollars. Given some of the other needs from the other community organizations, we've pulled back from that somewhat over the last couple of years because we want to make sure that other agencies are able to take advantage of that. So we use other funding within our general funds out of the Job and Family Services budget to help supplement.
Say the hundred and sixty doesn't sound like it spreads very far, you know, to go.
For the work that they do, it absolutely does. The potential work that they could be expanding to do and are planning on. And we talked about more money could be, could go a long way. We feel that they're great. Fiscal advocates and, and, and very responsible for the money that we provide to them in terms of being able to use that responsibly. But given that their success rate and our appreciation for their partnership over the years, in this case, more could always be.
Sure.
People could be better.
And what we do various, so JFS is the senior levy.
Right.
They're, they're, who we contract with. So they provide senior levy funds to JFS and then they have a contract with Area Agency. And the money goes then for that contract. That's how that flows down.
But they, they also, how many counties does your agency serve?
We serve nine counties. Yeah.
And you're four.
Four with Adult Protective Services.
Yeah. And then you're getting money from the state to help do this. Do you reward, right? I think that part of what you were asking.
Sure. And I can elaborate a little bit on that. I'm Trey Turner, Chief of Community Living. And I, I'm blessed to get to work alongside Rick. I mean, you can see he's an expert in the space and his team does a fantastic job here. Scott, thank you for everything that your team's doing. We just celebrated in the last year, fifty years as an area agency. So we've, you know, had a history of obviously serving vulnerable seniors for a long time. And I think that's one of the things that Rick hit on that's really made this partnership a success is, you know, we want to keep people healthy in the, in the community as long as possible. So our goal is if it's, they can be safe and independent and you saw the services and the work they're doing, you know, sometimes just, just going back a few times and building that relationship and getting somebody to be willing to trust and receive services. So that's one of our main focuses is, and I think, you know, truly a beneficial part of this work that we do. So we get allocated, you know, if you set aside Adult Protective Services funding, of course, we do a lot of Medicaid programming through the Area Agency, but a big part of what we do, sometimes people don't realize it is the non-Midicaid work that we do. So we get allocated funds from the state, state and federal funds that go to Knox County seniors sixty and over and those with disabilities. So that's where we work with, you know, station break, you know, as a focal point, senior center for us. They get funding to do meals and transportation. We also get funds that run through the Area Agency that we directly administer it and bring services. So that's when Rick talks about some of these services that we're able to leverage. You know, we always want to be a good steward. And I think that that's what we really do is we think about, you know, how do we meet an immediate need? But how do we support that person long-term? So it could be that they need to be on the passport program, a Medicaid program. Maybe it's, they just had a vulnerable time and we need to connect them with some short service to get, you know, another intervention in place. And now they're able to live independently. You know, sometimes it's as basic. You all know the housing stock. I mean, things are aging. Sometimes it's as basic, it's just somebody getting a ramp on their home to make it to the doctor. And so that's where we can really leverage our funds. But then I don't want to underscore the importance of some of these levy funds that we've been able to put into some of the APS programs now that do some different things that we're not always able to do. And I think that number was around forty thousand, I think in the budget for this time. And that is, you know, for people that again, you know, maybe it's some utility assistance, maybe it's some of the work that we've been able to do that Rick's mentioned, that sometimes those funds that we get that are non-Midicaid, you know, they're vulnerable. Unfortunately, they're not as much as they were at one time. They continue to decrease over time. And so we try to be good stewards of those. We target low income, minority individuals. There's eligibility criteria on those that we even have to consider. So we always think about how do we utilize those, you know, first, but then leverage these funds when we need to. And so they're greatly appreciated. I, I would be remiss if I didn't mention two. And thank you all for the Healthy Aging Grants. I know we worked closely with Jason and the Commissioners at that time. I think they came in at like the end of two thousand twenty-three, but we were able to really leverage them on a very short timeframe through two thousand twenty-four. But those were funds that allowed us to, again, to decrease waiting list, you know. Really, I mean, there's a time and a place for the seniors that need the Medicaid program, but they allowed us to delay entry into the Medicaid program that we know is more costly for seniors to live in the nursing home. So the more that we can be proactive and leverage these funds to do those kinds of things, that's great. And those funds, unfortunately, like the ARPA funds, they all went away. Keep telling our staff, we're back to normal, whatever normal is, but you know, which is unfortunately not as much funding. And so I think, you know, to be good stewards and to really think that way, that's what we've been good at a long time as an agency. So we want you to know that. But thank you. I wanted to say thanks for those funds and, and the partnership during that time because they did make a really significant impact.
Can you give us an update as to where the housing unit is in, in the process?
Sure. I wish I could. I've definitely not been as involved in that as Juana Patton, our CEO, and I can certainly follow up. I can make sure that, that we do that. I don't want to misspeak and, and give you inaccurate information, but she would definitely, I know her and Diane Raiming. I'm our Associate Director. I've been very instrumental in those conversations network, but I can definitely get you some updates on that. But yeah.
The Commissioners, we provided, I think it was two hundred thousand dollars in funding to Area Agency to help with that senior facility or, I don't know, what is it? A four unit or?
It's a eight unit, I thought.
That they're building here and, and rehabbing or whatever.
Yeah. And the land bank, you know, got the, the land and tore down the buildings. Of course that happened. It's down by Cooper Park, Commander.
Yeah. Yeah, definitely. Thank you for that.
It's definitely, we recognize too, as an agency, so I know it's going to be something too, that's really kind of on the forefront as in reference to housing. It's something we see throughout a lot of our counties, definitely still in Knox to where there is unfortunately, a lot of housing insecurity. And we do recognize as an agency that we anticipate and I guess just weighing in from the Adult Protective Services realm, again, some of these went to rental assistance, the funds, and then some of it went to security deposits to try to help people to remain in the home. But even that being done for some individuals with multiple evictions because of payment issues, then also people who, there are some we're running into with clinical hoarding issues and to where I get it, it can be tough as a landlord to say, well, I recognize that this is a situation going on with mental health versus the cleanliness of the apartments. Sometimes that's also leading to an eviction, which makes it more difficult. So definitely still something on our forefront as an agency.
Those eight units, will they be emergency temporary housing or will they be permanent housing?
It should be permanent housing, yes. Yeah. And thank you for the, for the support with those efforts. I mean, that is, I mean, I, I know I'm saying to the choir, but you know, housing is just such a need. I mean, we're just saying it's, it's huge. And so, and Rick had hit on the fact that we do leverage a pretty big separate than this work, but we have a pretty large whole modification program that we get other grants and funding through Medicaid and non-Midicaid that we can leverage, that we have a network of providers that, you know, go through our process of credentialing that, you know, and Knox County is one of the counties that they serve to go in and do roofs and ramps. And a lot of just the, the minor home modifications that help people stay there. So the goal is, is, you know, many cases, it's many generations that live in these homes and they need a lot of work. And if we can help keep, keep people there, that's the primary goal. And then when that can't happen or somebody needs another resource, these housing arrangements are just so needed and necessary. So thank you for that.
Do you have? I don't want, I don't want, I don't think the word is priority list, but for those seniors in Knox County that you serve, is there a one item that is, that you're serving most of the time? You know, whether that's cleaning their house or mowing their yard or, you know, the food service. We know what they can, they can get through different areas, but are there, is there a pecking list as to this is the top thing we see in Knox County that we need to, to help people with to stay in their homes?
Sure. And it, it ebbs and flows. So it's hard to kind of give a most prevalent, a lot of it, as I mentioned, is still in regards to the housing piece as far as to what we're seeing to, for the rental assistance and that piece too. But, and, and that's a really good question. For some individuals, it, it, and there's actually several, I could say that fall into that category because we do have individuals who, and things are tough to be a caregiver. And this is where I want to kind of stress this is to where when we get calls, there are people who will say, well, they have a son and daughter, but their son and daughter hasn't visited. I don't want to cast stones on any family members because in some of those cases, I don't know what other obligations those family members have, how easy it is for them to do it. And sometimes if they're calling, yeah, you know, and again, and one of the things that I really love working with older adults, but I hear a lot of, I don't want to be a bother or a burden to my family. So some of those family members are just as completely in the dark as anybody else. But for some of those individuals, when they've told their family member, oh, you don't have to do this. I've got this. Or if they have a death in the family of a member that might've been assisting, we know this cleaning. Because some of those situations that I mentioned about hoarding, where we've done chore service to try to help people, some of it's not necessarily a clinical issue to where they are, if you throw something away, it becomes really anxiety provoking and they are refusing to do it. Some of them, they are willing. It's just a question of that, things have gotten out of control. They continue to deny help until now. It's kind of a massive issue. So for some of those people, after the chore service is done, it becomes with an ongoing service where it's good to have some level of homemaking. For some individuals, it's foot the door. Now with Adult Protective Services, for a lot of individuals, and I will say, and I stress this because for some individuals, unfortunately, we run into because of infirmities such as if somebody has progressive dementia towards, to the point, they don't have the ability to recognize the situation that they're in and make decisions accordingly. Or because in some cases, as I've mentioned with mental health, sometimes because of mental health, especially if I fall into a situation where I have a lot of stressors or challenges I'm facing, it can exacerbate pre-existing conditions of dementia where I might've been handling that. Suddenly I'm spiraling and again, I'm having a difficult time to make those decisions. But in those exceptions, we're going to try to respect the individual and meet them where they're at. For some individuals, it's, I've done this. I don't want anybody to help me. I still feel I could do this. So we get sometimes some pushback. One of the things I like to be able to do with individuals is, and we have different workers because of being in different counties. So if I have a feeling, you know, based on a report that I get, if I look, you know what, this worker's personality will work well with this client. And now this is maybe the second time we're getting this, I might be sending a different worker back or I'll send that same worker back to build a rapport for foot the door. To be able to provide that homemaking service, get that chore service started, whatever it is that we can do.
Trust. Yeah. Yeah. And kind of back, just real quick to tag on and Rick did a good job of explaining that, Commissioner. Kind of back to your question on like, what do we see the most prevalent, the most of from an area agency standpoint? You know, we, we have navigators that take phone calls and run people through a process and then we're connecting them with the right services and programs. But we, we do assessments. So those happen, you know, in person where we can, you look at people's unique needs and what they're going to, to need. But through like the pandemic and what we've really seen even continue is a lot of like need for food. So nutrition, home delivery meals, you know, I suspect a big part of it is just cost too, you know, cost and inflation. There's, there's a lot there. But we see a lot with nutrition. You know, you guys are blessed in this county with great transportation, transit services. But you know, we do continue to see a need for transportation, the whole modifications. We're, we're still battling a workforce shortage when it comes to in-home caregivers. So we do see a lot of people that one of the big things that keeps them independent, safe in the home is as basic as somebody coming by just to help give them some personal care to have. And so we have made some strides in, in the rates and helping to get rates increased and that has helped with our waiting list. But it's still an issue, especially when you get into rural parts of our region. You know, of course, your county is one of those. I live in Belleville. We struggle sometimes even in Belleville. I live in Belleville, we struggle sometimes even in Belleville to get, you know, caregivers, but we are seeing some traction there and things improving. But um, you know, those are kind of just off the top of my head, those have been some prevalent services, personal care, uh, respite services for caregivers.
Do you find family members uh? Willing to help some of these seniors uh? With the things you're talking about?
In some cases, especially in cases where maybe they didn't recognize what was going on. We may talk, bring in some of those informal supports, give them some other supports. Maybe there's a homemaker to keep an eye also on their parents. Others, and I hate to say it, but just due to. Due to things that are happening with, I'll hear a lot of, well, I've got my own family, I've got my own. My own expenses, my own needs, and we're not getting that um, a- as much as we'd like. And some caregivers we get a lot where I have a caregiver that's willing to help and physically they can do it, but. If I have them navigate through, like you mentioned as well, navigating through um, something online, it would be difficult to do. With some of our caregivers, it is to navigate to help mom or dad set up medication, to help them to. Uh, manage if they have diabetes monitor, they might not have the skill set to be able to do it. So sometimes we're supplementing those caregivers. To try to give those caregivers help to keep their parents in the home as long as possible. We are seeing, and this actually contributes to the rise of exploitation numbers sadly enough to where. More people are becoming isolated. It was kind of a start of the pandemic, and we definitely have seen that trend increase. Trey mentioned about having homemakers come out, and that's been huge, because not only do I have somebody that's providing cleaning. On a pretty regular basis, but on top of that, I got somebody who's socializing with me. Because if I don't have anybody to talk to, some of these individuals, because I do have access to the computer, smartphone, whatever. I'll be talking to somebody, and unfortunately, it might be somebody who is trying to take advantage of them.
Yes, techn- technology can be a good thing and a bad thing, of course. That's one of the things we did with healthy aging grants with Station Break, is we actually offered. Technology classes to seniors, because that was a big. Part of what we felt like during that time, some of the flexibility those funds gave us the opportunity to do is be a trusted source for that. Because for a lot of seniors, that is the challenge of who can I just trust to train me and give me that? So we were able to partner and do some of that work with them, which was great.
These caregivers, is that a volunteer or paid basis that these people are going to the senior homes?
A lot of it is gonna be paid caregivers. We wanna make sure that they are vetted, they've uh. They're licensed bonded, they're working, so there's some level of accountability. I will say in the community. I love the support that's available in Knox County. It's a great community, not just beautiful drive up here, we'll admit. But then on top of it too, there's a lot of great things that because of just connections people have, there's churches who. Are willing to help out in the community, friends who are able to do that. So some of that is some informal where they find somebody on their own. And we're coming in maybe to help that person. But for the ones we would refer to, it would be more of kind of that paid position. But sometimes people will link and find somebody as well. There's a great station break. It's a great source for here in the community. To be able to, yep, they're they're uh, they give people great activities to participate in. So that's been a really good thing. And then also there's different places people can go socialize at. Farmers market here in the area, that's been very helpful, because you have people who will socialize, but as Trey mentioned. We do see nutrition as an issue, and it gives people an opportunity to. Take care of the nutritional insufficiency as well. So that's been huge, but it also allows that social aspect too. To where people can kind of brainstorm, hey, I've been having problems with this. Well, you know what? Why don't you call this guy? I know this guy. And again, that's people we might not be able to recommend, because we wanna be sure if you call our agency, we wanna make sure, hey, this person is licensed bonded. We know somebody that's gonna be going out to the home who can do these things for you. So from us, it's gonna be somebody who is um. That's licensed and be paid position.
You mentioned the farmer's market, I I think here in Knox County, uh, as opposed to some of the other counties. I believe I read it for Richland County, they have a program, but they use the uh. Financial scale as to whether they get the the token or not. We don't do. Financial scale here, but do you see in your other nine counties where there's farmers markets? Did they use a financial scale to as to the farmer's market?
Yeah, that's a great question. So farmer's market, and I would like people to to recognize, because they'll call us even and and even people. A lot of times we'll get confused on farmer's markets, because there are so many different programs with that. From like the Medicaid side, I know like with WIC, there's some things, and then with seniors, and then there's some people that just privately pay and go to markets. Um, but we actually in all nine counties, we do have the senior farmer's market program that we get funding through the High Department of Aging. And it does have an income based eligibility that is in all nine counties. So for all of our counties, seniors can call, they can apply. And um, if they're eligible, I think it's now like fifty dollars that they can get to go towards fresh. Uh, fruits and vegetables, and lots of times that's one program built into a market that exists that serves, you know. A lot of different individuals. So it is a component of what we offer. So low income seniors can get help through that.
And we provide some funding senior as a task force for older adults.
Yes.
And then there is not an income base.
True, yeah, it gets confusing, I know. It's, and I know it's in three sites here. I know here we have Mount Vernon, Centerburg and Frederictown is the sites for the markets. So really, it's been a huge asset for some of the people here, because especially when you have somebody who. You know, with exploitation being on the rise, we're seeing it already. If you listen to what the Attorney General puts out, they have this great presentation that shows. Set of the iceberg. So we believe that that still is an issue, plus people living on fixed incomes. It's really hard when people are having difficult choices to, do I do this or do I just not eat today? Which that's gonna lead to a longer list of problems. So definitely with the support that's been given to the task force for the farmer's market. Ben definitely appreciated with some of the older adults sort there too.
When we're talking about uh, uh, home maintenance, is mowing the yard ever an issue from what you guys see out there?
Sometimes we'll hear that, um, and I know that's a call. I remember kind of working on the other side of the fence. We would get a call on uh. We would get calls on that to find out who would do that. Sometimes there are organizations that'll do. Again, like to for for back to some of the churches who will do cleanup or utilize volunteers, who will do some of those things. And I do see that.
I could share a little bit on that, it, you know, I feel like we're an agency that if there's a need. And it's a health and safety issue, or there's something that's really getting in the way, you know, we'll figure out a way to say yes, whether that's through funding we have or a partner. That's truly an issue. It's not a routine service that we offer. But again, if you know, there was a need that was like, for some reason, it was really a barrier to that person standing at home, and we needed to try to get a plan in place. We'd probably figure out a way to partner and make that happen, but it's not something that we would just normally do with all the other services. For somebody's lawn, but yeah.
Well, the reason why I ask it, I know the inner church in Danville, one of their services that they had provided at a time. Was to have seniors be able to get your yard mowed, but they had to contribute like five, ten bucks.
That's awesome, so.
Yeah, and that's where there are some organizations that are in the, I know there are, there are groups that do like yard pickups. Things along those lines for older adults, which is great, but that's where. We'll definitely try to connect as we may know about it. We're not gonna, we're gonna let them know it's not through us, but if they would wanna do that. But as Trey mentioned, we are, we are always looking for ways to explore if it becomes a barrier. Once available, what do we need to put in place to be able to address that? Same thing with the home repair. There's a lot to where, you know, in in some of the cases we've heard. It's, well, somebody's coming home, but now because of these mobility issues, they are having a difficult time getting out of the home. So now the home is not safe, but if that issue was addressed, by all means. So that's where we're looking at that. Yes, it falls under a case of neglect, because the individual doesn't have the money to do that. But once we do a ramp repair and we've done that as well, and we've used some of the adult protective services funding too in those cases. To make sure their needs will be addressed. Those folks were able to remain in the home and remain independent.
Well, appreciate you you coming in and educating us once again. And Scott, that number if they wanna call is seven four oh.
Three nine two kids.
You have spouses caring for uh, each other, or the the one of them becomes the caregiver. It drains in and there's a lot of pressure, but it does save money than putting them in a facility, doing that support. And what kind of support for spouses that are giving care? And there's family help, but still, it's a lot, right? It's twenty four seven.
Yes.
It is, absolutely. And I hear this a lot from caregivers. I also do. Uh, mental health counseling and private practice, and it's one of the things we all hear from spouses who are burned out. You know, I I do not want this, my spouse that I promised him or her. That I was gonna keep them in home, and by all means, I'm gonna keep doing that. And you know, it's it's um. It it becomes really like you said, for some of those individuals, it becomes very taxing mentally and physically. So one of the things that we can do, and we'll always do foot in the door, like one of our, and and again, it's. We may go out, we have somebody say, oh, no, 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 I'm gonna take care of it. I don't want somebody else, a stranger coming into to assist. And that's where I mentioned that I'll have the same worker go out, because in some of those cases, the problem's not being rectified. Maybe it's somebody in the community who's noticed this. That this individual needs assistance and we'll get another call. So I'll have the same worker go out, talk with them again. Suddenly, the thing, something might change and we are able to do a foot in the door. I am okay with somebody coming out, maybe and helping with cleaning. And then we let that older adult know, well, you would get to direct them, you're kind of in charge, you tell them what you wanna do. And then from there, there can be a cascade of other services. There could be other home health that's involved to be able to provide care like personal care. We'll explore if that trends is gonna be appropriate, since they have some assistance as well. There is some assistance too through other programs to be able to provide in-home care, like personal care rates, depending on what they qualify for. Or we'll help them get linked with private paid resources as well. Depending upon, again, what at, what what's available for them, but that's one of the big things to be able to help. And then that way, that caregiver, I can go outside, maybe and just go for a walk or something. While I know that my loved one is getting their needs met, and I've got that supervision in place. So I can do what I need to for that respite, to give them a little bit of a break. But sometimes it starts with that foot in the door, just. Uh, once I feel comfortable, this is, I've never had anybody come in, I've never done this, it's completely out of my routine. Now suddenly I'm allowing somebody to do this homemaking service and I'm learning, hey, this isn't that bad, this is nice. I don't have to do this cleaning, so we can start adding services.
And I'll just tag on one of the things that we're really proud of, that we've done over just the last couple of years through some of our caregiver funds that we get as an area agency. And I can't remember which facilities we're partnered with in Knox County, but when um, caregivers call. We can actually, like if a caregiver wanted to step away from their role for a little bit more of an extended period of time, like up to five days. And they wanted to go on vacation, or they wanted to go camping, whatever it may be, we will cover an inpatient stay at a facility. For assisted living or a skilled nursing facility for that caregiver to be able to put that loved one in a safe place and walk away. And have, you know, time to just kind of refuel themselves. So that's um, something that's been utilized that we're really, you know, excited to be able to offer and do. And then we do um, respite services at home for caregivers as well, a lot of education. So if if you know caregivers or there's caregivers in the um, you know, caring for a loved one, they just, a lot of it is. If you talk to them, they'll say, I just didn't know what to do. I didn't understand the disease processes. Um, so we provide a lot of education. It's a big part of it.
Thank you.
Yeah. I think one, one final thought if I may, uh, one of the things I appreciate about you all that you've taught me is is your attention to the entire family unit. Kind of to your point, Brenda, especially um. Individuals that you serve, they have a right at any point to say, I don't want your services anymore. And they're very good about letting everybody else know that they're okay and they're fine, and we don't need your help. The stress and anxiety that gets created for other family members, and even some of the judgments sometimes that gets reported to them, say. Why didn't you know your dad was in this condition? Why didn't you know his home? Well, because he told me he was okay, and when I come to visit him, he's able to put on the certain. You know, whatever to to, and I and I think, you know, instead of asking anything beyond that, he seems fine to me, when really. There's a lot going on, and especially when dementia is involved, there's so much time and tension and energy that. That uh, those people demand in terms of the care that they need and that. That that's just very rough on everybody else that's trying to lend a hand and and provide care for their loved ones and. And and thank you for all the things that you do to insert yourselves in those situations and beyond. You're. You're great people doing great things for people in our community, and it's much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate the appreciation.
Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Nice to meet you.
You too, very.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Scott, good to see you.
You're very, thanks Bill.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next next up, we have our dog warden here to give a update on the the dog shelter. Thank you. Brian. Being here. Well, the monthly report for April two thousand twenty five. We had a total of forty five dogs enter the dog shelter. Sixteen of those were owner surrenders, twenty two were strays. Five were seized or custody dogs, and two were returned adoptions. Uh, we had a total of forty eight dogs leave the dog shelter. Seventeen were adoptions, ten were dogs that were euthanized, twenty were returned to owner. And one was transferred out, sent to rescue. It should be noted that nine out of the ten dogs euthanized in April were at the owner's request. Due to the dogs being aggressive, having a bite history, or for medical reasons, and the one dog the shelter euthanized caused serious physical harm, including disfigurement.
Brian, when the owner uh, requests that, do you charge them for euthanizing the dog?
Yes, there is a fee. Part of our owner surrender policy is there is a fee to surrender a dog. It's a hundred and twenty dollars if it is licensed, and then if it is not licensed. It's a hundred and sixty dollars for that license for the unlicensed dog, and then uh, the fee to surrender to euthanize is fifty dollars if it is licensed. And then it's ninety dollars if it's not licensed, because of the license fee.
Thank you.
Um, as of Wednesday, May fourteenth, two thousand twenty five, there were twenty three dogs at the shelter, and all twenty three of those dogs are available for adoption. Out of the twenty three dogs at the shelter, sixteen are owner surrenders, six are stray dogs. And one was seized from its owner because of animal neglect. Uh, there is a total of five dogs on the adoption floor that have been at the shelter for over sixty days. And a total of nineteen citations were issued in the month of April. Deputy uh, Brian Weiser issued three citations for failure confined and two citations for failure to license. Uh, Deputy Tyler Moore issued nine citations for failure confined, and I issued five citations for failure to confine.
So the two that dogs have returned for from adoptions?
Yeah.
Did they both get?
One of, one of them has already been readopted, and the other one is still at the shelter.
And then if um. Your your hours at the shelter for people who wanna come out to the shelter are what?
Yeah, so we're open from ten to four to the public Monday through Saturday. Um, we are at the shelter by eight AM, so if someone comes at. By eight, then typically we can help answer a question for them. We just liked that first couple hours is for cleaning, so it's kind of hard to get the dogs out and show people, but. We try to accommodate everybody the best we can.
So even on Saturday, you're open till four?
We're open Saturday as well.
Good.
Ten four.
Yes, so after everyone goes shopping on Saturday in those businesses, like um, Smith Pfizer's meeting closes at one. Come down and and get your dog.
We'll still be open.
Well, yeah, you're doing a guy, you and your crew are doing a great job down there.
Thank you, appreciate it. Brian, you're welcome, thank you.
Hey, we just have a few items today, commissioners, we uh. Received these the other day, we entered into the record, but now we have approved the annexation of a municipal owned land. By petition submitted by the municipality, and this is for twelve point nine seven acres from Hillier Township to be annexed to the village. Centerburg, and this was part of the agreement with the park. Village took over the park, so this is ready for your approval.
Oh, Commissioner Smith, right?
Second.
In all those favors, say aye.
Hey, there's nothing the commissioner signed, right? It's just a resume. Perfect. And then the next one we have is the approval expedite is type two annexation of two point zero three acres from Hillier Township. To the village of Centerburg, and this has been reviewed, and this is related to AMVets post number fifty nine.
Motion to approve.
Second it.
Those favors, say aye.
Aye.
And then we have an improvement. And then we have an approved uh, contract amendment between John Family Services and the Opportunity Knox Employment Center and Masters Construction talked about this um, a week ago or so, a roof project that we did out there came in, um, would have been under what? Estimated it and we did not at the time include gutters, downspouts, softened fascia and I had maintenance go out, take a look at that and it really and probably would be the time to do it while we're doing the roof. So we got a price from the contractor on that and it's an additional thirty-seven thousand one hundred dollars to take care of all of that. And so this is ready for your formal approval.
Motion to approve.
Stackler.
Those favors, say aye.
Aye.
Now require everyone sitting there. And then last, we have approved a contract for the county engineer. This is for his annual patching material, twenty twenty-five, with small asphalt paving in the amount of three hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those favors, say aye.
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 I believe there's multiple places on that that you'll have to sign each one of them. And that's the resolutions for today, Commissioner.
You have anything kind of tasting this?
Uh, the only item I have is maybe I mentioned briefly, I've thought I met with the contractor uh, yesterday for looking at the side west entry to the building, we're looking at putting a small, you know, covered king of the injury in there. Uh, he's going to get made a couple tweets to that, so he's got like a three D imaging of that and once he sends that back, then I'll bring it in and show you that. We obviously wouldn't want to proceed with that project till probably October when this project's done, so it was not impeding access. Um, but that would cover the area where the, that's now our secondary ADA is for the building and kind of put a cover over that. Though near there, getting a button and there's a lot of alarm around the building there. So something we've talked about for a couple of years and so we're trying to get that done. And that's the vendor that took care of the cupola and the courthouse, so we should look his hand. They kind of handmade that, so to speak. Yeah, and I know and stuff. But while he was here, we also talked to him about the memorial building. Last year, we, we have the dental molding that kind of goes all the way around the building. Last year, we had one of those uh, break loose and fall. Um, just the wooden had rotted and the nail fell out. And uh, there's another one over there that Todd has noticed that's falling away from the building. And so we're going to have, leave them kind of do a, give us a price to kind of just do the
Picture.
Inspection of all of those around the building and, and make sure that, we don't think it's widespread, but we want to make sure that if there's any other ones we're aware of it, then obviously they can make material to match what's there. So it's historically accurate. Um, but so I'll let you know that price, but I think that's what we're going to do is now get a lift, go around the building and really do a good inspection of all the, the wood and material up there and, and see what needs replaced. So we'll get back to you.
It's probably sinking issue through the right, so we went ahead and proactive and there's a fair pause.
Yes.
But do you know, Todd has heard back from AEP as to when they're going to shut off the electric there behind you?
No, he's working with the arts authority in the memorial building. They'll kind of determine when we're going to allow AP to do it. Um, to make sure it doesn't impact any events or use of the building or anything like that.
Okay.
But there will be a new poll. AEP will cover the cost of that.
Okay.
So that's, that's good news, but no, I don't think we have a definite date yet, Bill, on that.
Okay.
And that's all I have for you today.
Uh, Commissioner, uh, see, have anything?
No.
Commissioner Lester.
Uh, no, I don't have anything, Bill. Thank you.
I do have a one o'clock um, meeting this afternoon and in, in that meeting, we're going to talk about uh, some legislation that's being talked about down at the State House. One is about uh, cybersecurity. Um, where the um, legislators is planning on, doesn't have a number on it, a house bill number, anything like that. Uh, but it's going to talk about how uh, each um, legislative body needs to determine if they get attacked by um, the, the criminals and confiscating our uh, um, IT information as to whether we pay uh, ransom where or not. That we have to have a policy put together. Then the other thing that they're working on that we'll be talking in this meeting is about the, the, the vicious dogs, um, and updating that, that language. I, I was, was I was going through, but I, I noticed that um, I, I didn't know whether they had uh, an insurance requirement. Um, before, now they're talking about uh, for those dogs that have a vicious requirement. And again, this hasn't been approved, but it's in the process of having um, um, it's a higher fee, which I think we probably already had that. It's fifty dollars for a vicious dog. But then they're also talking about having insurance of a hundred thousand dollars uh, for those who own vicious dog. So that's part of the discussion I'll have in, in that meeting this afternoon. Um, reminder, on Tuesday, we will not have session. We'll be signing bills. And so our next time to be in session would be next Thursday at this time. At ten o'clock. Today we had land bank before that. And so the, nothing else?
We have Regional Planning Commission tonight at seven thirty. I'll be there if anybody wants to attend.
What time is that?
Seven thirty.
Really? Okay.
Yeah.
So everyone have a chance. So if nothing else, take a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
I second it.
Okay, we stand adjourned at this time.